Go ahead and call the Monday, May 19th, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We've got a great audience here tonight. Look forward to the conversation and thank you for being here to participate in government. At this time, I will ask Commissioner Tyson for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Wayne Tate with Manah Church to come deliver our invocation tonight. Mr. Tate, thanks for being here.
It's a pleasure. Thank you so much. Let's pray together. Lord, what an honor and a privilege it is to start this meeting by invoking the highest authority of all. Lord, we come to you this evening grateful that we live in a land, Lord, where we publicly can freely proclaim and recognize our need for you. So God, we look to you. We come from all different cross-sections. We don't all think exactly the same, but we have one thing in common: we recognize our need for you. We thank you, God, that you had a plan and you sent us your Son. And so, we welcome you to come. Lord, we thank you for those who are serving our community, how grateful we are for them. God, we're so excited and blessed to be here in Cumberland County and, God, to just be part of what you're doing. Lord, we recognize there are many needs, but we come to you, God. You are the God of great solutions. And so, we welcome you into this meeting tonight. We pray, Holy Spirit, that you would lead, guide, and direct conversations. And we recognize, Lord, you're the one who places those who are in authority over us, and we thank you for them. And so, we give you praise in all of these things. And everybody said, amen?
Amen.
And amen. God bless you all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Tate, don't make your way away too quick now. Pastor Tate, you gotta tell us a little bit about your church, or you gotta tell us about something.
Oh, come on now, thank you.
I'll give you a...
I appreciate that. All right, I appreciate that. My name is Wayne. I'm one of the pastors at Manah Church. I've been privileged to be part of the staff there for 23 years and to just see so much change in our community over these 23 years that we've been here. Manah Church is, we don't consider ourselves to be the biggest or the best of anything. We just are thankful for the opportunity that we have to play a part in our great city here and in our county. And so, we have six locations across the, what we call the Fort Bragg region. And it started over there on Clifdale Road and it's just continued to grow and develop. I came 23 years ago to be the worship pastor. I made all the loud music and the noise and made everybody unhappy. And now, I'm the seniors pastor and I'm telling them, turn it down, it's too loud. But anyway, we are excited to be in this community and grateful for the opportunity to be with you tonight.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you for being here. At this time, before we move forward with recognitions, I'd like to yield the floor for a point of personal privilege for Vice Chairman Jones.
Thank you, Chairman DeViere. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to all the loving support that I received from my Cumberland County family to Commissioner, Commissioner... Give me a moment. Sorry. Give me a moment. I just wanted to say again, like I said, thank you to my, my family here at Cumberland County. My sister died of cancer and I just buried her two days ago. She was, her name was Anastasia Jones Van, advocate here in the community, very actively involved. Want to thank Chairman DeViere, I'm sorry, give me a moment here, for being a supportive friend, all of the commissioners here for checking on me every day, Glenn Adams for coming down, Commissioner Adams, and also Commissioner Patel for coming to South Carolina for the funeral, and everybody here just, just loving me and caring about me and the beautiful flowers that you sent, amazing, huge flower, did not go unnoticed. And again, just to the whole community for the outpourings of flowers and cards and I try to help take care of families, they call me the, the, sorry, give me a moment. They call me and I don't take it lightly, the people's commissioner, and the people definitely looked out for me. Every single person up here, like I said, every commissioner here called me every day. County manager called me every day. So when we say that we are family here in Cumberland County, I definitely felt the love and, again, everyone out there, overwhelming for people that called to check on me, and so I just wanted to say thank you.
And you continue to be in our prayers, Vice Chairman, you and your family. At this time, we'll go ahead and move to recognitions. I'd ask for Ms. Fayetteville and Ms. Fayetteville Teen, Katie Strain, Ms. Fayetteville 2025, and Mary McLamb, Ms. Fayetteville Teen 2025, to come up to the podium. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Patel to join them at the podium. We've got a couple gifts for them, tokens of appreciation, but let me read a little bit about Ms. Fayetteville. Katie Strain was crowned Ms. Fayetteville on February 1st, 2025, and has been involved in pageantry since the age of nine. A proud graduate of Methodist University with a degree in elementary education, Katie is currently in her fourth year as a second-grade teacher at Overhills Elementary. Katie, outside of pageantry, Katie enjoys watching collegiate sports, especially Alabama softball, Roll Tide, and Arkansas gymnastics. She is also assistant coach of 12 U girls' fast-pitch softball team and loves spending quality time with her family and friends. And Ms. Teen Fayetteville, Mary McLamb, Mary is passionate about creating a positive generational change. She believes that with the right mission mindset and motivation, everything we set our sights on is doable. Whether in implementing a free swim lesson program, rigorous dance every day of the week, deep-sea fishing with her family, or participating in her local Girl Scout troop, she recognizes the value in a good work ethic and smart goal-setting to achieve her dreams. She's absolutely honored to currently serve in the role of Ms. Fayetteville Teen and is working to leave a legacy so each young girl is inspired to achieve their dreams. Thank you both for being here tonight. We're going to let you say a couple words, and then Commissioner Patel's got a little token of our appreciation for you. So I will start with Ms. Fayetteville Teen.
Hi, everyone. And like he said, I am Mary Michael McLamb, Ms. Fayetteville's Teen 2025. And so, that is under the Miss America umbrella and the Miss North Carolina organization. So through this title, I've been given the platform of my social medias and representing Fayetteville and ultimately Cumberland County. And I use this platform to share, share my initiative of drowning prevention. And that is titled because one is too many. Eighty percent of children living in a household income of less than $50,000 will never learn to swim. And that is a statistic that is striking to me, and I know it is to you as well. Because of this, I am partnering with the Fayetteville and Cumberland County Parks and Recreation to bring free swim lesson camps throughout the summer, which I am so excited about. We currently have nine children enrolled, so I know that number may seem small, but it definitely will change nine children's lives. I'm also so excited to hear about Cumberland County's new initiative to hopefully bring an aquatic center to the area, and this is super exciting news to me, and I hope it comes to fruition because this would mean that our children could have access to year-long swim lessons, and that would be so, so life-changing for these children because it's not only a fun hobby, it's a life-saving skill for so many children each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Katie Strain, and I am serving as Ms. Fayetteville. But like he said, I'm also a second-grade teacher in a Title I school, and I witness every single day the challenges that our students face, not only academic, but so much more. Many people tend to think that students come from a home where self-worth is taught and encouraged, and I know firsthand that that is not always the case, and that there are students that are struggling every day with their mental health. In 2022, I started my community service initiative called "I Love Myself," where I promote the importance of self-worth within our classrooms. Through this initiative, I encourage students to understand and manage their emotions, to seek help when they need it, and practice kindness towards themselves and others. This brings me why I'm speaking before you today, because as Ms. Fayetteville and educator, I respectfully urge you to support the return and revision of House Bill 923. This bill would have created a pilot program to bring social-emotional learning into all North Carolina public schools and classrooms, grades K through 6. With thoughtful revision and collaboration, I believe that this bill can be reintroduced and improved to ensure that every student in our state has the opportunity to learn not just reading and math, but also empathy, emotional resilience, and self-awareness. Our students are growing up in a world filled with increasing pressures, social, emotional, and academic, and we owe it to them to make sure that our schools are not just the centers of learning, but a place of healing, growth, and support. Social-emotional learning is not a luxury, it is a necessity. And I believe with the power of community partnerships that we can bring this back to our K through 6 grade classrooms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Patel? Step up in front of the podium. Thank you both for being here tonight. Nextly, we, next, we'd like to recognize the Graves Creek High School Envirothon teams and invite them to come to the podium. Y'all, don't be shy now, come on up. And I'd like to invite Commissioner Faircloth to join them at the podium as well, so you can hand them a couple tokens. So, the Graves Creek High School Envirothon teams, Envirothon is a fun, hands-on, natural science, academic competition for middle and high school students sponsored by the North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation District, with the help and implementation from the North Carolina Division of Soil and Water Conservation. Two teams from Graves Creek High School participated and excelled at the area's Envirothon competition. The Creek Crazies won the first-place title and went on to compete for the FFA Division of the State Envirothon. The Solar Flare Force Team finished in fifth place at the area level. Under the leadership of Sean Garcia, their advisor, the Creek Crazies competed at the State Envirothon and finished fourth place. Let me tell you about the team members of the Creek Crazies. Kayden Boyd, Lindsay Garcia, Eden Ramos Cordova, Peyton Starling, Corbin Stevens, and as an alternate, Samantha Smith. Congratulations, you all. Go ahead, the one with the trophy, whoever wants to make some comments. You're going to pass the trophy.
This was really an amazing experience for us from our chapter at Graves Creek High School. I've personally never done Envirothon before this year, and being able to compete at the area level and the state level, even getting fourth place at the end, it was an amazing experience. We, I, I think I can speak for both teams that we learned so much about just natural resources in general and how to, like, really work together as a team in this sort of competitive environment. And I just want to thank our advisor, Mr. Garcia, for this opportunity. We really, there's very little that we'd be able to do without him, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And you know, with that name like Creek Crazies, we were thinking about something like Savannah Banana or something. But I see you're dressed in your environmental clothes. We've got a couple of things here for you, but just want to say a couple of things. You can tell a lot about people by what they celebrate, and we're not real sure, we're not sure what it says about us, but we know what it says about you. We appreciate the effort that you put in because it's a great effort, soil and water here. I'm seeing, I'm looking at Clifton McNeil right over there. I'm looking at some nice people that, that promote these things. And I want each of you to take one of these bags, and please, for your advisors or any other team members that you have here, and I'll pass these to you as we go, okay?
Advisors, other team members are here. Can you take them, your other team members? They can take them?
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's get that picture. Go ahead, Marshall, step up in there.
Garcia, you want to get into pictures?
Come on, Mr. Garcia, step up. And Commissioners, we have a, several speakers for the public comment period, so I'm going to take a point as a chair, and without objection, I'm going to move forward our presentation. Without objection, I'll go ahead and move forward to honoring Major Tandra Adams. Hearing no objection, we'll go ahead and move to that item. We'd like to go ahead and ask Sheriff Wright and Major Adams' family to come forward. Go ahead and ask Commissioner Tyson to join them at the podium as well. First, I want to thank you, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for allowing us to honor one of our own with Major Adams. Sheriff, thank you for what you do on a day-to-day basis. Thank you for being here, and thank you for allowing us to present this tonight with your presence. After we read the proclamation, we'd love to have words from you if you, you care to do so, sir. Thank you again for being here. We'd like to present a proclamation on behalf of the county. This has been approved previously, but we wanted to present it formally. Whereas Major Tandra Denise Adams served as a chief jailer at the Cumberland County Detention Center. She served with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office since 2002, starting as a detention officer and reached the top of the ranks in 2014. And whereas Major Adams was the first woman and first African-American to serve as a Cumberland County jail administrator, and whereas Major Adams started a backpack giveaway program for students after worrying about the children of incarcerated parents. Since she launched the program, the Sheriff's Office hosts a giveaway, a giveaway each August where all students can receive a backpack of school supplies and a haircut. And whereas Major Adams was a passionate writer and recently unveiled her self-published book, Learn From The Greatest Networker: How Jesus Built A Movement, Not A Team. And whereas Major Adams cherished her family, enjoyed travel, and was a dedicated member of her church. And whereas Major Adams leaves behind to cherish her memory, her husband, three children, many friends and family, and her work family at the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center. Now therefore, we, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, do hereby acknowledge Major Tandra Adams a life well-lived and extend sincere condolences to her family and friends for their loss. Be it further resolved that the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners proclaim Monday, May 19th, 2025, to be in honor of Major Tandra Denise Adams in honor of her dedicated service to Cumberland County. Approved this fifth day of May 2025. Signed, Kirk J. DeViere, Chairman, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations. If the family would like to make comments, you're welcome to make a comment if you'd like to.
One thing I can say right now is praise the Lord.
Amen, sir.
And God is good.
All the time.
And God don't make no mistakes. She served him gratefully, and when it was her time, he took her. My baby, he took her. And I just want to thank all of Cumberland County, especially the Sheriff's Department, and how they was right there and still there for her. So, for me and my family, we thank everyone in this office, especially Sheriff Wright. He's, he's a man, he's a man of honor. He's a, he's a man of honor and did a great job in placing her in the position that she was in, and I thank God that he did what he did. Amen.
Thank you, sir. God bless you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I want to thank y'all, first off, for recognizing Major Adams. As a father said, her daughter's standing here, her son-in-law, her grandbaby, she's going to be missed, you know? Most of all, I'm going to miss her. The folks sitting out here on this side here, they're going to miss her. Major Adams touched everybody, you know? If you needed a pair of shoes, that's all you had to do was ask Major Adams. You know, we, over there at Detention Center, there normally sits 700 folks over in that Detention Center. Guess what? Major Adams cared about every one of them, no matter what they done or what they've been charged with. She took care of them over there, you know? So, she's going to be missed. As I said before, at the service, she was like my little sister, you know? We used to go back and forth because she cared about those people. You know, I just said, Major, you know, we can't do that. She said, Sheriff, we can do that. We can do that. Then I just had to mine, I said, now, you know who's sheriff? I'm the sheriff. But she's going to be missed. You know, we loved her very much. She has touched everybody over at that Sheriff's Office. She's touched everybody out here in this community. But one thing about the major, she has trained those folks at the bottom behind her, so we got somebody to take her place. You know, we're going to miss her. I'm definitely going to miss her because when I go over there, I always listen to her hollering, going, because we're, we're here at Major Cameron Hogan. She's always yelling for Cameron Hogan. We're going to miss that. But I want to thank everybody, thank the Commissioners, you know, for recognizing her because a lot of times, you know, folks, you know, we do a hard job, you know? Law enforcement is hard, especially at Detention Center. I always tell my people, Detention Center, you're over there for 12 hours a day with them. My officers on the road, deputies on the road, they may have two or three hours with them, but you got to take care of those people when they're detention, and it takes a strong, mighty person to run that Detention Center. But again, I want to thank you for recognizing her and thank the family, as I say, for allowing us to have her during that time. Thank you.
Sheriff Wright, let's grab, you want to grab, I guess not. You want to grab the picture? I guess not. Picture? It's all right. I think they're leaving. Or you can walk outside and do it. You can, go ahead. Again, thank you for the Sheriff's Department and the family for coming out and taking the time to allow us, the Commission, to recognize the service and the life of Major Adams. We do appreciate that. Give everybody a second to clear. Commissioners, we'll go ahead and now move to the public comment period. I call on County Manager Greer to read the public comment policy.
The public comment procedures are as follows. The public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute is attained. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order in which their names appear upon the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will discuss, will not discuss the matters regarding the candidacy of any person seeking public office. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Written comments and/or supporting documents may be left with the clerk to the board.
Thank you, County Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We have seven speakers.
We will, we will proceed with the speakers. Each speaker will get three minutes to speak. We'll, we'll go ahead and extend that time to allow the public to share their comments. At this time, we go ahead and call the first speaker.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Dr. Anissa Short. I live at 3811 Briar Gate Lane here in the city of Fayetteville. I stand before you representing Chosen Pen Publishing, a local business right here in the city, to extend invitation to not only you, but to everyone in the room. If you have a child that's 12 years or under, we want you to join us on June 21st from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. We are hosting a red carpet childhood literacy festival. The emphasis of this event is about literacy, childhood literacy particularly. But in addition to supporting the cause of literacy with our youth, we are supporting small businesses and local authors. Now, how can you participate? I'm sure that's what you're thinking. We would love for you to use your platform to share information about this event because we want the public to come out. It's a free event for families and their children. In addition to that, we love for you to use your position of influence to read. We would love to have you come out and maybe even read to the children that are there. Not only will we have vendors that are authors, we're going to have local businesses providing interactive activities for the children. It's really all about the kids, but it's about the family and it's about the community. In addition to that, I'm sure you have children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews, people at the church, neighbors and friends. We want you to bring them out. Again, it's free to the public, June, 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 Saturday, June 21st from 12 until 4:00 PM. And Commissioner Adams, Dr. Norma McLaughlin, and Pastor McLaughlin wanted me to extend a special invitation to you.
Location?
Yes, it's at 1420 Hope Loop Road. If you're familiar with New Life Christian Academy, it's going to be on their campus, inside of the auditorium, in the gym.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, thank you.
Tell them I say hello.
I will do just that. Have a great evening.
Madam Clerk, the next speaker? Mr. Haney, next speaker, Madam Clerk. Ayanna Elliott. Madam Clerk, the next speaker, please.
Terri Thomas.
Good evening, Terri Thomas, 508 Spalding Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name again is Terri Thomas, Executive Director of the Vision Resource Center, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The VRC Board staff and members are grateful for the county's past support of our mission to Cumberland County for our blind and visually impaired adults and children. In 2024, we served over 2,100 individuals with your help, offering training in independent living, assistive technologies, youth support, and community inclusion. This year, we respectfully, respectfully requested $50,000 in community impact funding specifically to help support staff salaries. Unlike many grants, as you know, they restrict funding for salaries, so this was a very unique or rare opportunity for us to ask for this funding. It's a chance to invest not in overhead, but capacity for the people who deliver the mission. Right now, I'm only the, I am the only full-time employee at the Vision Resource Center. carrying this work of the over 2,100 people that we serve. So we desperately need the help. Volunteers and part-time workers only stretch, but so far. So if we are expected to grow the impact, we must grow our staffing. A proposed $10,000 award, while appreciated, definitely appreciated, simply does not meet the scale of the need. This funding would allow us to bring an additional program and outreach staff so that we can train more clients, reach more families and strengthen our role in this community. It's not just about payroll. And this is what Cumberland County is all about. It's about the people. It's about the blind children that need support in the school system to succeed. It's about the adults that are blind that are trying to regain their independence. It's about the seniors that just want to age in place, that don't want to go to a nursing home, but need us to help. And that's what Cumberland County is about. We fill that gap, which is what we talk about. We don't receive state and federal funding. We're not national. We're not popular. We serve an underserved and unseen community of people, but well-deserved community. But every local investment that we received is our lifeline. We talk about supporting local businesses, small businesses. Well, we're a small nonprofit that needs that support. I ask that you please reconsider increasing our allocation toward the $50,000, not for us, but for the residents that depend on us. If you can stand residents, because they came all this way, so let's show them who we are, please. That's my time, but I thank you for your time and efforts and how you support our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Peter Stewart.
Mr. Stewart. Madam Clerk, will you read the next speaker?
Janelle Baker.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Everybody else is here. Good evening. My name is Janelle Baker and I reside at 7146 Philial Road. And just to piggyback off of Ms. Thomas here, I was kind of voluntold to come up here and speak on behalf of the VRC. And I believe that, you know, I am fit for the job. So just give a little background here, you know, I'm a mom and I'm a wife, you know, and I am also a sister of someone who is a member of the VRC. And so when you think about the VRC, you know, thinking about a mom role, right? Moms are gonna do whatever they gotta do to take care of their seeds, okay? So this past January, I lost one of my sons. And as a mom, you know, you think back, like, oh, I should have done this, I should have done that. So the VRC, you think about everything that these members need, that they don't have, that it can't function in life. And as a mom, you want to do everything that you have to do to make sure that your child has everything they need to be able to be successful and a productive person in society. So you all talking about, oh, Cumberland County, Fayetteville, you know, we are family. VRC is family. VRC is a part of Cumberland County. And think about all the people that have no knowledge of what the VRC supplies. And, you know, I'm gonna give a little demonstration of getting anybody to just kind of engage in this with me. Thinking about the VRC, if I can get you to close your eyes just for two seconds, tell me what do you see? Nothing. This is what the VRC members go through. You have some members that are blind. The VRC is for people who are blind, visually impaired. You have young children. You have adults. My brother is a member of the VRC. And then being his sister, I'm the one and his significant other. I'm sorry, I'm touching the screen. I don't mean to, but I'm sorry. I get a little emotional, you know, when it comes to this because these people are not saying that, you know, they are any better than anybody else in Cumberland County, but they've been in business for 85 years. 85 years. This year is 85 years that the VRC has been around. Thank y'all, folks. Clap it up, clap it up, clap it up. And thank y'all very much for that. But thinking about this VRC, they need things. They need funding to be able to help them to get around. There's something they call the We Walk cane. Think about a blind person that needs a cane or a blind person who does not have a cane. And the cane has this GPS to help them just get away, get around everyday life. It supplies what they need. The VRC, you know, you're visually impaired, some people, you know, everything they may see may be white. It may be blotches. Oh, my time is up. I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Oh, I can keep going?
No. Ms. Baker, Ms. Baker. Ms. Baker, you left too quick. I was gonna allow you to make a final closing statement, but thank you for, no, no, no. Come back up.
Okay, two seconds, two seconds. So my closing statement is, we would really appreciate the funding that Ms. Thomas has asked for Cumberland County to help the VRC. Thank y'all very much, and I-
Thank you, Ms. Baker. And I understand Ms. Thomas as well. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Angela Everidge.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you all for allowing us to speak tonight. I am here, wait, Angela Everidge, 3524 Sugarcane Circle. And this is my son, Michael Macias. He is currently a member of the Vision Resource Center and has been one for almost 23 years. My son, Michael, was born severely premature. He was weighed 1 pound 5 ounces and was born at five months. I was five months pregnant when I had him. In the age that we're in, technology, hospitals, everything has increased, so the survival rate of premature birth is threefold. However, when you're that premature, the oxygen causes you to go blind. Your eyes no longer work. When he was 15 and 16 each year, he had one eye removed from each because his disease constantly declined where the pain would literally put a grown man to his knees. After that, he woke up from surgery and couldn't believe that he no longer had any pain. It was then that I realized he had been in pain his whole life, but didn't know it because to him, he thought it was normal. That's how he was born. When he was approximately five years old, I reached out looking for resources to help him. I am at a point in my life with my husband that we're able to afford him things that he needs, technology that's too expensive for the common household family to buy. The glasses on his face are $2,500. These glasses, he can turn them on and take a picture of you and it's gonna tell him, "There's a white male in front of me. There's a black lady in front of me." It's gonna read the sign behind you. But not everyone can afford that. No one in the U.S. makes them. We got them from England. The We Walk cane that she mentioned he has, we bought several years ago. But it was through the Vision Resource Center that they're upgrading those canes, that those canes with the technology doing better, that he's able to get that. The Vision Resource Center, like she was saying, is 85 years old this year. The Vision Resource Center is one of the programs that taught my son how to brush his teeth. Now, you can sit here and think, "How could that even happen?" Even a 12-year-old should know how to brush their teeth, but when you've never seen anything in your whole life but darkness, you don't know how to do it. Things that you feel every day, just the lid of taking off the toothpaste cap, is something to a blind person that is, whatever you can't stand to touch, whatever texture you don't like, that's what it is to a blind person. To be able to button your shirts like you do every single day, or your pants, or to snap, or to zip, that's things that my son cannot do or has issues doing. But it was the Vision Resource Center that taught him those basic skills that we decided to take for granted of. It is the Vision Resource Center, oh, my time's up. I'm sorry.
Go ahead and finish your statement.
It's the Vision Resource Center that brings all of these services to the underserved population, and that is the visually impaired. I beg and ask the Commission to please look at increasing the funding to the Vision Resource Center. I also read in the fellow observer that it looks like you might impose leasing and utility cost to the Vision Resource Center. I beg you not to because the more money they have to pay out to keep serving the families, the more money these families that we don't have have to keep paying out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
There are no more speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go ahead and close the public comment period and we will move to the approval of the agenda. County Manager Greer, are there any changes for the agenda?
Yes, Chairman DeVeere, we need to pull Item 5A, approve a short-term solution for a sheltering plan and the associated budget ordinance amendment number 5252520196. And we also need to add Paragraph 6 to Item 10A for the closed session personnel matter. Those are all the changes from staff on the agenda.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Vice Chairman Jones?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. There's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as adjusted, properly seconded. All in, open it for questions or discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand in the affirmative.
Unanimous.
And we will go ahead and move to Item 3 as we move the presentations forward. I will move to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to pull Item E, approval of resolution of intent to lease real property to the Vision Resource Center.
Second. Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Commissioners, anything else for the consent agenda? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Vice Chairman Jones?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda with one item that's pulled, properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in for your vote. All in affirmative. Raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we will go ahead and move to Item 4, rezoning cases. We will now address Case 0031. Call in County Manager Greer to introduce the item and the presenter.
Yes, the public hearing procedures, arguments by the proponents and opponents, shall be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes per side. If there's no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time limit is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. Tonight, we have four zoning cases. The first one, Brawls Howard, Director of Planning, will present each item and discuss any questions you may have. And the first one, 240031 deals with a solar farm with PWC.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening. Good evening.
Let me get this thing queued up a little bit. So as County Manager Greer mentioned, this is Case 0031. You can see where this is located on the locator map. It's just located just to the east of Ramsey Street and just outside of the northeastern side of the city of Fayetteville boundary, but it's west of the Cape Fear River, as highlighted on the location map. The applicant owner is the city of Fayetteville through the Fayetteville PWC. The agent is David DeChamps, who had applied for this. The request is to go from PND, which is Planned Neighborhood Development, to A1CZ, which is an agricultural conditional zoning for a solar farm for a little less than 45 acres. You can see it highlighted here in the crosshatched map. For those of you that know where this is, this is Carvers Falls Road. This sits at the intersection of Carvers Falls. And, well, it's just north of the Fayetteville City Limits line. For those of you, I can show you a little bit better on this map with color. But for the most part, the property itself is all wooded. There is a substation that is located in the upper center part of this property. But for the most part, a lot of this area, for those of you that might be familiar with the ZipQuest, if you've taken your family out there before, this is sitting pretty much at the entrance of that where you pull out to start going into that facility. So you can see the ZipQuest here, and then you can see Carvers Falls Road. But it is largely surrounded pretty much by a lot of vacant land with some scattering of homes you can see with the subdivision up here in the northwestern part of the map. This is a little bit more of a highlight of the zoning out here. So PND is what we call a dormant district. So it's not an active district that we have right now. It's a district that was a holdover from our previous zoning ordinance some years back. But the comparable district of, if you wanted to build in PND today, would be a 7.5 residential district. So I just wanted to say that's the comparable district in our current ordinance right now. We really wanted to put this map up just for some context, and I'll get into why it's important here in just a minute. We did have to send this case to RULAC. It does sit within the five-mile boundary of the base. So we just wanted just to give you, just for the context again, that the site sits over to the right, but you can be able to see that it's about three and a half miles as the crow flies to the Simmons Airfield and about eight miles plus or minus from the Pope Army Airfield. So while this is important, I'll get there in just a second. So as far as the soils out in this area, it does have a lot of hydroic and hydroconclusion soils. There is a water line over by PWC that sits just a little bit to the east. You can see this highlighted in the blue up there off of Carvers Falls Road. But for the most part, if any utilities were to be put this site, they would have to be extended accordingly. When staff had looked at the plan that's applicable to this, it's the newly adopted North Central Area Land Use Plan, which was adopted in 2024, which calls for this to be primarily open space. There is a little sliver of suburban density residential you can see in the far eastern side. It's a little sliver that you can see there. But for the most part, a lot of this was designated in the plan at that time to be reserved for either conservation or some sort of parks and open spaces, you can see. So the request is not consistent with the adopted plan as it is currently in place. This is the subject property. As you can see, that's the substation that I highlighted on the map before. So you can see there, but for the most part, it's largely wooded, as I stated earlier. This is looking west on Carver Falls Road with the site immediately on the left-hand side. You can see the public notification sign that's put out there per state statutes, and that's the turn-in as you go into the ZipQuest facility right there where that white fence is. This is looking across the street. And this is looking east, looking in the opposite direction along Carvers Fall Road with the site immediately on the right-hand side. So there was a lot of discussion about this. So this actually went to the planning board about two months ago. And the direction of the planning board at that time was they wanted to have a little bit more discussion with RULAC and the base due to the proximity of where it was to the airfields. And so I do give the credit, I do give some credit to the applicant. They did take the time to go out and meet with the base. They went through some glare studies and they went through basically 60 days of a lot of due diligence to put the conditions on this request that had pretty much largely addressed a lot of, or if not all of, their concerns. But the site plan, some things I wanted to point out that were some key conditions, and I'll get into this in the slot here in just a minute, is the provision of a buffer, a streetscape buffer that sits along the entire area of the streetscape. This is roughly, I believe, about a 50-foot buffer. So as I said, it's heavily wooded, so the trees would remain. In addition to additional plantings, that would be outside of that as well, too. And then for this crosshatched area that you see along the entire back, that is a combination of plantings and a wood stockade fence with a barbed wire fence, I think also added as well, too. So that goes along the entire perimeter along the back and to the south. So this is just a little bit more detail of what that looks like. So the planting buffer on the streetscape that I showed you, which was that curve around, is the existing tree buffers. And then they're gonna plant trees staggered across the entire length of that streetscape, but the width itself is about 50 feet. And then the perimeter buffer you can see here is gonna be, as I said before, just a combination of plantings and then the fence that's gonna be put up as well, too. Some of the key conditions are largely associated with the use being solely used for a farm. There would be some limited types of uses that would be allowed for some domesticated grazing of animals to control some of the grass and weed growth that's on the site. As I had stated before, there's some buffer conditions that are here. And we also, through RULAC's concerns, I should say, was to try to limit some of the, like, the lighting that comes onto that would be limited to pretty much what's associated on the site itself and then downlit so it doesn't produce glare for any oncoming aircraft or those airfields. And then, of course, the site plan and then like the plans for the landscaping have to come through us for approval to make sure that it is- have to come through us for approval to make sure that it is in conformance with the plan. So again, staff took this request. It was actually heard officially last month. Staff does recommend approval of the request. It would be a plan change, so the motion that's in your packet is reflective of what that would be. When we took this to the planning board last month, they ultimately approved it by 7 to 0 vote. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ross, the, really quick, the adjoining properties that are PND, since that's a dormant district, do we, do we have any plans to kind of convert that to an active district on those properties? Or walk us through that.
Yes, sir. So in the ordinance, we have a whole list of different types of dormant districts. And so those districts, when we adopted our zoning ordinance some decades back, I think that the providing sentiment at that time is they wanted, that they had people that were used to those districts. They didn't want to change those districts because they had had them for so many years. So the prevailing sentiment at that time was those districts could stay, but then they would be giving a corresponded district in our ordinance, which is what happened here. So the PND was that type of district. So it is active, so to speak, but it's active underneath a 7.5 designation. So if somebody wanted to come in and do housing, they could have 7,500 square foot minimum lot sizes and things like that and be able to do that for like a lot of the residential uses in that whole PND area.
Mr. Chairman, follow up to that.
Go ahead.
So with that, I just want to make sure, if there's a property owner that would have that use by right, we're not going to make them come in and do a rezoning request because that's a dormant district. Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Mr. Howard? Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Howard, a quick question. Can you explain the buffer zone work on, I know you mentioned there are existing trees, and then there's going to be more trees planted.
Yes, sir. I can go back to here. So actually, probably better if I go back to that. So do you see the streetscaping here? I don't know if you can see on yours, but this whole ring of these little dots that you see that are, that are here are going to correspond to basically this down here. It's going to be a 50-foot buffer, which they are going to pretty much try to maintain as untouched with the trees that are there. But anything where you have gaps, they're going to go along the outside edge of that and actually plant additional trees in front of the existing vegetation around that entire front ring of the site that touches the street around the edge. Then the back part of that, as I said before, right around here, from what I understand, due to security reasons, there's going to be a barbed wire fence on the inside of that. I believe they're also putting, if I'm not mistaken, David, is like a wood stockade fence, and then they're going to utilize the existing planting that's there. You know, so pretty much it's going to have a lot of buffering. I think from staff's perspective that, I don't think you're going to be able to see this thing whatsoever from the street. I think that's probably fair to assume. And it's going to be heavily secured.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Howard? All right. Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead, and we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have three speakers. Our first speaker is David Deschays.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is David Deschamps. I'm the Director of Engineering there for Fayetteville PWC. Been working for PWC for about seven years now. So the idea behind the solar farm is, of course, you know, it's going to be a renewable form of energy. So of course, you know, trying to mitigate any type of fossil fuel, carbon emission, and that kind of stuff. So that's kind of the ideology behind it. And again, Fayetteville PWC behind the idea of just using renewables. Right now, in the works, we have currently, we got a solar farm in Gillespie. We also have a solar farm by the Rockfish Water Sewer Treatment Plant on Tarts Mill Road. So those farms are in full development. Just some of the ideas, of course, you know, we've got to have some mandates from federal government to try to reduce our carbon footprint. And of course, this will help PWC meet those standards as far as renewables and things of that nature. We purchased one at a parcel a few years back with the idea of adding solar there. And our thought process, as you indicated, you know, we have a substation right there, so it's kind of really helpful from an electrical standpoint of view, so. Also, a few key points. We've got some tax incentives from the government to help us out pay for this solar farm, and that's one of the ways that we're trying to reduce the rates here in Fayetteville. So with these tax incentives, we're going to get a 30% reduction in the electricity we're going to produce as in comparing to contrast to what we're currently getting from Duke. So Duke's rate's right here, and with this solar farm, it'll be just a little lower. So I can't promise anybody rate decreases, okay? But I can promise you that, you know, the idea behind these solar farm at Rockfish, Gillespie, and on Carvers Falls, that trying to mitigate any type of future rate increases as we move into the future. I want to let you know, we're trying to be good neighbors, so we sent letters to all the neighboring individuals. And we filtered, we hired Booth and Associate Brad that's right there with us, but he can talk a little bit more to that. But we answered phone calls, we answered concerns, we demonstrated the plans, we met, team's meeting, trying to show everybody what our game plan was. And a lot of good things came about with all these meetings. The visibility that Mr. Patel indicated as far as the trees and really driving down the neighborhood and being able to not really see that there's a solar farm back there, that was the idea that I bought forth from these meetings. Another few good things that came from those meetings was water runoff. And we did some calculations and trying to figure out what the water is today and what it's going to be in the future. So a few things that we saw was there was going to be a 20% reduction in water runoffs.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, if I could just, just one question.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Thank you. So this is 44 acres?
Yes.
Are y'all using the entire 44 acres only because this plan called for some of this to be open space, as whether you don't have to enclose all of it in that 44 acres and leave some of it?
Well, I think we got a good drawings from this individual right here, but can show you that we're not utilizing the full 44 acres. I think, as you can see there, there's a lot of open space that surrounds the solar farm. Yes?
I'm just trying to see if you leave some of it outside the fence? And outside, so that there would be some open space out there?
My, my understanding is the dots with the lines there is the fence, and you've got the buffer on the outside of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Anything else for the speaker? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question, and I think I know the answer to this, but I just wanted some clarification. So this is to add additional capacity, or is it to, to do power banking so that you're not buying as much of your, of your electric from, from Duke?
Right. So whatever we produce right here, Mr. Tyson, is going to be offset from what we're currently buying from Duke.
Got you. So no additional capacity?
That's right. So this solar farm right there is 5 megawatts. So, you know, it's electrical, so it's got to be a little funny. It's engineering, right? But the 5 megawatts we're saving with this solar farm is going to be offset our bill. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Hearing none. Thank you, and I will call the next speaker.
Bradley Martin.
Hello, Bradley Martin. I'm with Booth and Associates, PWC's consulting engineering firm. I'm from 1193 Fairley Place, Raleigh, North Carolina. Booth and Associates is also a firm in Raleigh, North Carolina. PWC did a really good job addressing the neighbors' concerns. They came to us multiple times with every single concern. When it came from the sound, we did a sound study to make sure that the sound decibels was below residential, which is above and beyond the loudest outside of fence for the existing solar farm that we have on Gillespie Street was 51 decibels. The design will also, to confirm what he said, will have less watershed than without the design. So the current, the current trees. Also, we're leaving some existing trees in that shrubbery and adding shrubbery along the road to make sure you can't see the solar farm from the road. And additional trees could be added if that's not adequate. We performed the glare study and made sure we addressed all the needs of the local airport. And we are using anti-glare panels to help with any type of glare that could come. But the study shows that there's not any problematic glares happening. Let's see here. Also, when we did the letters, I put my, my office phone number on those letters to make sure we're responding above and beyond to what the, the staff was also responding to, to make sure all concerns were addressed. And then also, the fence going around the farm is, there's no open electrical source in the farm. So really, the, the security fence is really to help people going into steel and do things they shouldn't be doing anyway. There's not really, so when we go into a solar farm, there's nothing, no voltage or open source that you can touch. It's all locked away and safe. So the, the safety is really, is for people to go, to keep them out from, from stealing. And that's all I have here. I just wanted to be here in case you had any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two questions in regard if this is approved. Number one, what's the timeframe in regards of them putting up the buffers? And then number two, since you all, it seems like, have due diligently reached out to the neighbors, what would that consist of in regards to basically timeframe of how long this would take for the buffers and then just the whole initiation of the project itself for the solar farm, beginning and end projected timeline? Have they had, has any of that been put in place yet?
Yes, the projected timeline is actually to the end of the year. So we plan on energizing in January of 2026. The, the trees will take time to grow. So during construction, you'll, you'll plant the trees, and it'll take months for them to grow. And then sometimes some don't take, so PWC have to be diligent to make sure it places any ones that, that don't survive the transplant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Russ Bryant.
Good evening, Chairman, and other Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Russ Bryant. I'm at 533 Carvers Falls Road. That's our family property. It was mislabeled ZipQuest. It's somebody else's property. They had labeled it ZipQuest, but we're the other one. But I'm on behalf of that property that was labeled as ZipQuest. I can just say that I think this board is aware that this property's been designated across the road from what's to be a future state park. We have, ZipQuest is, and my family has preserved that land for over 65 years. I'm not sure the exact date, but at least that. And even when property across the road came up, we went and, and tried to purchase it. A neighbor came, and he said, "Well, if y'all are purchasing it, I know it's safe because we're trying to keep out apartments." So I will say that the, the people I've worked with, I think I'm the meetings, by the way. I think it's just me, who's expressed concerns about water runoff. And they've changed an enormous amount about the project. But what that should tell you is that it was not ready for prime time when they were, when they were trying to get it to go. Tax incentives is the only reason this works. I'm having a hard time with that area out there, which is on the front cover of the North Carolina Visitors Guide this year as a, as a special place for Cumberland County to clear cut 45 acres of trees to power another 800 homes, maybe, maybe 1,000 if it's sunny. It's not a lot, right? And it's a lot of trees that are going to go down. This is not the one that I've been sent. This is, you might have an older, older thing that's been approved, but there's supposed to be a water retention pond on that. The 50-foot buffer, Commissioner Patel, you're not blind. It wasn't 50 feet. It's 20 feet of trees and 10 feet of bushes, and then 20 feet of nothing. And I will say that every time I see these lovely diagrams with these giant Fraser firs or something on there, is they need to go see what a pine tree looks like. And, and that most of those out there make a, make a, make a power pole look fat. I mean, they are tiny little things, and we have some deciduous trees that have grown up in front of it. But 20 feet, 20 feet of skinny trees isn't much of anything of a buffer. So they have gone to some real efforts to try to make this work, but their numbers have to work, too. And I think we're a bit of a conflict as to whether or not this is a, is a, is the right place for this. I don't know that my concerns about noise have been addressed. Inverters, the type of inverters, the amount of money they spend on inverters makes a huge amount of difference for decibel levels. And, you know, it is the country out there, even though we're just down the road off of Ramsey. So there's a number of things that might be addressed. I don't know that the 20 feet of trees is 20 feet of trees. It seems to be 20 feet off of the right-of-way. And the tree line isn't, doesn't line up perfectly with the right-of-way. So I want to make sure that they can deliver what they're saying. And we've obviously got some concerns about the location of this and how it's being done, even though they have vastly modified this for the better. I still think we have some concerns. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Commissioners, any questions? Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like, can you interject a little bit more? You were saying there were some concerns about the noise that was not addressed. And can you just adjust that for me, please?
Yeah, I've just, if you do some research on solar farms, one of the, besides the toxicity of the panels and all the stuff is, or the inefficiency of the whole thing, is that, is noise that generates from inverters. And I, so it just depends on the quality of the inverter. And the very expensive inverters are much quieter and probably wouldn't pose a plan, a problem. But 50 decibels is, is still a decent amount of noise being right across the road. And again, a place that's long-term designated to be state park area and a special gem of Cumberland County. So that, those, that's one of my concerns. They may be able to address it, but we're here to try to make sure that the nature of that area, not the actual nature, but the, the sense of it is preserved. My family spent, my father, most of his life trying to preserve that. And he was at the last meeting. He couldn't make it tonight, but we were out there today. And he's 90 years old and, you know, can hardly walk, but he wouldn't want to look at that waterfall that he's preserved all those years. And we've got concerns about where this water's going to go. And when you clear cut 45 acres, those trees aren't there to soak up the water. I mean, there's, there's real concerns with it. And I, I trust mostly the engineering. I'm not, I'm not a naysayer. But, you know, we want to make sure that this is done carefully and thoughtfully.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And then can you go back to, you were stating, speaking of the water that you did not see on here, you were stating, if you could back up for me about that concern?
Yes, ma'am. So the, the land out there that creates this waterfall is made of really hard, compact clay, okay? Which, which creates a cool waterfall, but it also means that when it rains, it sits. It doesn't go anywhere. It does, it takes forever to soak into a ground. So we've got ditches along our road that if it rains just a little bit, will stay full of water for a couple of days. So I brought those concerns, and they said, "Okay." And that's what that fancy word they had up there about the type of soils, it means it doesn't absorb well. And so you're going to have runoff. And so they were, they heard me, they listened to me, and they said that there was, they had re-engineered it to create a retention pond. And then, then they told me the retention pond was temporary, and then they've told me it's permanent. So the last thing I got from them, as a retention pond, you know, around that curve of the road, and it's supposed to be a permanent retention pond, but maybe they've taken it off. Maybe this is a more updated plan, and, and it's not a requirement. But I can tell you that, I mean, I, I know which way the water goes, and it's going to go two different ways if, if it comes off that property and there's no ditch under that road, and it will sit there and/or, you know, overflow some of the creeks that are going to go over the waterfall and so forth. So we're, we're in the, in the line of where this water goes if it's not carefully maintained. And I suspect there's been a lot of thought put behind it. But that's what I mean by saying that what I, what I've got, what they told me is not being what's shown to you here. And I just want to make sure that that is, in fact, a requirement.
Thank you. Good information.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. And this might be a question for Mr. Howard. I know, so we're kind of hearing some concerns about noise, the water retention, runoffs. And then I do want to make sure that if there was supposed to be a storm pond, is, is there supposed to be one? And if not, why isn't it not depicted? And I know that one of the gentlemen from PWC was, was discussing reduction in runoff before he got timed out. before he got timed out. Do you know what the, what the reduction of water runoff was supposed to be?
Since the county doesn't really, we don't regulate stormwater. So I mean, there is a condition in here that I will point to that is actually pretty explicit, that they'd have to go through the standard DEQ permitting process. And also, there's a condition that the, that the plan would be finalized per DEQ submission. So I mean, if it goes to DEQ and they have to mandate that there's a stormwater pond be put in, then we would make the allowance for that on the plan at that time. But being the fact that county doesn't, is not in the stormwater business per se, I can't answer specifics about hydrological calculations of what water's coming in or going out. All that would be handled by the state once that hits that process. And as far as the noise levels, I think you had mentioned something about the noise level. There is a condition in here that it can't exceed more than, I believe, 60 decibels is what I, is what we had. And that was, I believe that was largely worked out, is through the conversation over the past 60 days. We were going back and forth with conditions about noise and all that kind of stuff as a part of all that.
Commissioner Patel, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, I think you answered some of my questions, but just to make sure that we're all clear, this, this evaluation hasn't had a final site plan approval, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, so with that, does the conditional site plan here today meet all of the requirements that are contained in current code?
Yes.
I.e. setbacks buffering as it's drawn?
Yes, it does.
And a follow-up, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Go ahead. And then under the current zoning classification, just to make sure I understand, are we looking to make this change to allow this use by right? Or do they have the use by right under the current classification, but this classification would give them greater density? Or can you expand upon?
Yeah.
Upon that a little bit for me?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So that's a good question. So as I said before, this is currently zoned PND. I know the land use plan says that it's open space, but that usually goes into when we reach these kind of discussions about future use and if it has to change. Currently, as it's entitled, it's PND. So you could put 7,500 square foot lot homes across the property. So what this does is, since it's conditional, it's tied to this one use, to this one site plan, that if anything were to change, if it's approved, then it would have to go through the process again to go through a rezoning, and this board would see and have to approve whatever's put on there outside of what you're seeing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any, any other questions?
That's a good point. Actually, so we did the calculation in your staff report, you could put, in theory, about 261 homes out there today on the site.
Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, so then we can continue with any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any additional questions, comments? Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a concern and a question in regards to the retention pond. So whose responsibility would that be? Because the concerns this gentleman stated about how the water would run and that could impact other people's property and land. So whose responsibility is that to make sure that issue doesn't take place?
That's a good question. So that would have to go through the State Department of Environmental Quality as a part of the site plan and review and approval process. So what happens is the applicant would submit a site plan to us, we would review it against our ordinances, and in particular, this set of conditions in the site plan that we have. And then all that gets forwarded to DEQ, and then they would have to be able to implement whatever their standard is for stormwater control through their processes. And then we get that back, and then we finalize and then approve it from there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, any further questions? Hearing none. At this time, I would entertain a motion from the board. Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
In case ZON 24-0031, I move to approve the rezoning request from PND Plan Neighborhood Development District to A1CZ Agricultural District Conditional Zoning, and find that one, approval is an amendment to the adopted current North Central Area Land Use Plan, and the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional requests or applications for amendment to said map for this request. Two, the proposal use is for a solar farm, solar panel farm that will serve a public utility need. Three, the proposed use will generate minimal impacts to local roads and nearby residential areas. The board also finds that the request is reasonable in the public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
A motion on the floor that's been properly, properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Please raise your right hand in the affirmative.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Faircloth. Voting in opposition, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Commissioner, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Adams.
I couldn't hear.
Okay.
So I was not...
We're tied. Because she couldn't hear to vote.
We'll go ahead and state the motion again.
I ain't gonna hear.
Not going to help me. Mr. Attorney, for votes in the affirmative.
Well, it should be, but Commissioner Counsel, you understand that, do you understand that, I know you said you couldn't hear. Well, this is a motion to approve the request of PWC to have this zoning change to accommodate a solar farm. Do you understand that? Then you can vote either yes or no.
And we're voting against it.
Well, I'll go ahead and call for the vote again. All in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Patel to approve the rezoning request, raise your right hand in the affirmative.
Voting for Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Faircloth. Voting in opposition, I have Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, and Commissioner Adams.
Okay. And Commissioner Counsel.
Voting in opposition?
Opposition.
Voting in opposition.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to case ZON 25-006.
Mr. Chairman, you haven't taken any action on this yet. Is, you might want to call to see if there is a motion to deny it.
My apologies, correct. Thank you. Mr. Attorney, or we can leave it, either way. Entertain another, do we want to entertain another motion?
I mean, what was, she voted no, it was four to three, so.
It should be no, unless you, the vote's no.
You just haven't approved, you haven't approved anything.
We haven't approved anything, but we haven't.
No. You haven't denied it, you haven't...
Commissioners, are there any other actions on this zoning case?
And let me point out that to deny this motion, you would need to state the reason that the request is not reasonable or in the public interest, and state that reason. If that is the, is the motion, just let me know, and we make sure you get some good language.
Or Commissioners, you can table the motion to a future meeting.
Or you're going to take, yes, yes.
I'll make a motion, Mr. ...
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
In case zoning 24-0031, I move to deny the rezoning request from PND Plan Neighborhood Development District to A1CZ Agriculture District Conditional Zoning, and find that the request is not consistent with the North Central Area Land Use Plan. The request is not reasonable in the public interest because of the fact that it takes away the public area that was in the land use plan, that it has a north ordinance, and the fact that we did not see a retention pond with that, with the water runoff that would be resulting from this development.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, approve, yes.
There's a motion on the floor to deny the rezoning request. It's been properly seconded. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Counsel, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Faircloth, and Commissioner Adams.
All opposed.
Commissioner Tyson and Commissioner Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. We'll go ahead and move to case ZON 2, I'm sorry, 25-0006.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I'm turning over to Ross.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So as stated, this is case ZON 25-0006. You can see by the highlighted star, this is somewhat sandwiched in just north of Spring Lake and in the Fort Bragg area. The applicant owner is Alex and Shayla Edwards. The request is, again, is to go from RR Rural Residential to MPCZ Planned Industrial Conditional Zoning. The intent is to put a commercial parking lot for larger vehicles, such as tractor-trailers and such, for about 30 acres on this site. You can see it's kind of unique for this area. This is Bragg Boulevard heading into Harnett County. So it's surrounded pretty much 90% around Fort Bragg. It's a sort of an island that sits in the middle of that, but this is Lucas Road that comes off of Bragg Boulevard that comes into the site. It goes through a little R6A area, but for the most part, it goes back in here on a small little road, and then it opens up here in the back area. You can see it's largely wooded, as you would expect, probably around the base area for this particular type of location. It's very heavily wooded. You do have some homes that are here, but for the most part, all of this stuff is largely just vacant. There's a cell tower out here, as is indicated on the map. So the zoning is stated as RR for pretty much this whole area. Just wanted just to put that out there, just to show you the expanse of how pretty much forested this whole area is. When you look at the soils, there are no indication that we can find of hydroric or hydroric inclusion soils. There is a water line that sits out on Bragg Boulevard. We don't see any sort of indication of a sewer line, but the soils seem to be fairly good for most uses. When we look at the Spring Lake Plan that was adopted in 2022, they did call for low-density residential out in this area. So when you look at some of the goals that you, it does say in the, in the actual plan policies, so the map says one thing, but the policies for the Spring Lake Plan are actually pretty interesting. To put it in a nutshell, it says if there are parcels that are larger in nature, that maybe some types of non-residential uses could be feasible. So if you say, for example, as long as there's adequate, like utilities and buffer requirements are met, but for the most part, in the low-density residential area, you see R15, 75, and PND. So the request is not compliant with the plan itself. Yeah, so it's that, so like your motion would be similar to the one that we just had before. It would be a three-part motion to be able to change the request, or to change the plan, I should say. This is the subject property, is yours kind of pretty much, I'm going to try to explain this because it's, it's pretty unique. A lot of the photographs were taken right here where the parcel starts down this dirt road, okay? So all the pictures that you're going to see in the next few slides are going to be pretty much from this vantage point right there. We try to get back in here, but as I said before, it is very, very heavily wooded, so we can only go to pretty much where a lot of our access would allow us to be able to go. But this is standing there looking into the property itself. You see there's somewhat of a, some type of a little pathway or road going through there, but you can see the sign again for the public state, the state public notification requirement. This is the west view, so this will be looking into the property. This is the north view, so this will be looking just across the street. And this would be the northeast view as you're kind of looking back onto Bragg Boulevard. So there's a conditional zoning site plan that you can see here. Starts from here, but for the most part, a lot of the residential stuff was up in here, but this is a long road that's going to have to be upgraded per the fire marshal. So there's some conditions that are put on there about that to be able to have a fire truck to be able to go through here. But for the most part, the road's going to be upgraded, comes through here, and it's going to be a lot of parking here for, I believe, up to 90 vehicles is what the condition sheet has. So some of the key conditions that you see, obviously, that it has to be compliant with the plan that you see, that it would be strictly limited to a commercial parking lot for bigger trucks. We did put some prohibited types of uses in here, such as fuel storage. You couldn't have junk yards, nor can you store junk vehicles out in this, on this property as well. When this actually was passed rule act, there was another conversation that was really, I thought was a very good conversation with them. They only had concerns about the lighting, and so we have conditions on there that the lighting, I think at first they had lighting for security that was shining out. They said the lights need to be shining in on the property, so the applicant did agree to be able to put a condition on there to limit the lighting to the site itself and not have it spill over out into the perimeter. So staff does recommend approval of the request. When we took this to the planning board last month, they supported it by seven to zero vote. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you could go back in reference to, you stated that, that the fire truck cannot get through it this time, so they're going to enlarge the road, or what's going to be the situation with that? You said that.
Yeah, so currently, as you can see the conditions out here, it's just dirt. So when we talk about the fire marshal about what type of road he would have to have in order to be able to get a suitable fire vehicle down here, it's not, I mean, of course you have dirt, but there are going to be potholes and things like that out there. So they'd have to put a layer of pretty much crush and run. It would be what we would typically call like a Class B street. So it'd be more like a gravel. It would, it would utilize the existing property that you got there, but it would be laid flat, compacted, and be able to have it so a truck can go smoothly across the road if they have to get access to the back.
And that would be required first prior, correct?
Right.
Before they get the permit?
Right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I was looking at these key conditions, and you had the junkyard and all of that. We have historically not enforced these things. I mean, we, we get calls all the time about enforcement of houses and junkyards and all of that. Who's going to monitor all of this? I mean, it's great to put them in here as these conditions, but who's monitoring? And it may be more for staff or somebody else, but if these, if it turns into a junkyard or it has these vehicles out here, if I'm the person that got it, I'm not telling. So I'm just going to put them over in the corner. So who monitors this?
Largely, that would be a complaint-driven. So I mean, if we had folks that lived out on that street, for example, I'd mentioned there were some homes up at the front. If there were some issues with junk or junk vehicles that were out there, it would be addressed typically on a complaint-driven basis. We have pretty much three code enforcement officers that are field officers for the county. So we're staffed in such a way that would have to be a complaint-driven in order to be able to address that.
But I wouldn't, if I was those houses up at the front, I'm not driving back there. I mean, it's, it's, it's a parking lot and all of that. So, I mean, so we'll never know then, basically, whether there's junk storage out there. I see Fort Bragg has that as, I mean, that's one of the things, I'm looking at the rule act and stuff. So basically, it could be that and we'll never know. Because if it's complaint-driven and nobody drives back there to complain, it just sits back there.
Yes, sir. I think if it's one of these things that if there is a complaint, we have a tool in our toolbox that we can address it at that particular point. And I think a lot of the stuff that we heard from rule act, a lot of times when we go to rule act, they're going to be more concerned about putting rooftops anywhere near the base.
Well, I understand that part, too.
Right. So I think given the choice between RR and putting houses out there, they're more attuned probably to having some non-residential uses and that wouldn't complain about whatever their activities are. That's just what we hear from them typically.
Commissioner Adams, anything else?
Just, I mean, I, you know, I understand that, and I don't know whether we talked to some of those folk up at the front who have those houses, but 90 tractor-trailers coming by back and forth, I just wouldn't want that near my house. I mean, it's just, I mean, just back and forth and, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, it's kind of rough.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the notes, you did mention, kind of in the 10-year history, that there was another rezoning case, case P20-42, which was C1P and R10 to CP slash CZ, and that was approved. Looks like that was across the street, across Bragg Boulevard. And I see that it's commercial. Do you, and you may not, do you remember what the history was on, on that particular use and what kind of commercial use it was?
Not offhand, no, I don't, Commissioner. Not enough I can be able to answer a question about that. Somebody's calling my name from the audience.
Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, Commissioners, before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Howard. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
And at this time, we will close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion for Mr. Howard on this case? Hearing none, entertain a motion on this zoning case. Commissioner Patel, you're recognized. Commissioner Patel, you recognized?
In case ZON 25-0006, I move to approve the rezoning request from RR Rural Residential District to MPCC Planned Industrial District Conditional Zoning and find that, one, approval is an amendment to the adopted current Spring Lake Area Land Use Plan and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional requests or applications for amendment to said map for this request. Two, the requested district is more compatible than a residential district due to the site's proximity to Fort Bragg. Three, the requested use and zoning district are compatible with the land use plan policies. The Board finds that the request is reasonable and in the public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion on the floor to approve the rezoning request. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, ask for your vote. Raise your right hand in the affirmative.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Faircloth. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
All right, we will go ahead and move to item C, case ZON 25-0007. Mr. Rawls, I'll just bypass you, County Manager.
So again, as you stated, this is case ZON 25007, generally in the same area that's around the northeastern area around Spring Lake. You can see highlighted by the star up above, near the Harnett County line. The applicant owner is ABJ Investments. The agent itself is Scott Brown. The request is R15 and RR to R20 Residential. The intent is to put some residential homes out in this area on about 93 acres. You can see highlighted in the red crosshatch, this does sit off of Elliott Farm Road, near the intersection of Johnson Farm Road. It's highlighted in the red crosshatch. You can look at the surrounding areas, largely wooded for the most part. You do have a substation out there, but for the most part, you have some scattering of some single-family residential homes and maybe some manufactured homes as well, too. The zoning map should give you a little bit more of some coloration so you can see the zoning districts. You pretty much have R15 and RR out in this area, so it's not uncommon to see 20,000 square foot minimum lot sizes out here that are allowed by the current zoning that's there. There is some water lines out there near the intersection of Johnson Farm and Elliott Farms you can see highlighted in the blue, but for the most part, there's no sewer lines. But there's, for the most part, I would say there's some, some hydroic soils out there, but for the most part, you don't see a whole lot of, you know, bad soils on the property themselves. This is just a zoom in of the property. Just wanted to show the aerial. You can see it's pretty much fully, if not wholly wooded. When staff looked at the Spring Lake Area Land Use Plan from 2022, it does call for this area to be suburban density residential. So when you look at some of the goals that are out there, that it is recommended that the land use can match the nearby zoning. It's recommended that these types of districts can serve as a buffer between denser areas and active formal farming and rural development, and then the associated zoning districts that were called out in the plan as being acceptable would be RR, R20, R20A, R30, and R30A. So we felt that the request was consistent with the adopted land use plan. This is the subject property. This is the northeast view. As you're looking on Johnson Farm Road, you can see again the state, you know, the sign out there for public notification. This is the southeast view, pretty much looking right across the street. Again, you see a, pretty much a standard of some residential homes out in the area. And this is the southwest view, looking down Johnson Farm Road with the site immediately on the right-hand side. Staff did recommend approval of the request due to plan consistency. When we did take this to the planning board last month, they supported staff's recommendation by seven to zero vote. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Howard on this case? Hearing none, we will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and ask Commissioners if you have any additional questions or comments for Mr. Howard. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Patel?
Yes, thank you. In case ZON 25-0007, I move to approve the rezoning request from RR Rural Residential and R15 Residential Districts to R20 Residential District and find that the request is consistent with the Spring Lake Area Land Use Plan, which calls for suburban density residential at this location. The Board also finds that the request is reasonable and in the public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion on the floor to approve the rezoning, properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand in the affirmative.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to case ZON 25-0009. Ask Mr. Rawls to go ahead and continue with the process. You're recognized to present the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So we're gonna get a little bit change of pace. This is in a completely different area of the county. It's not in the northern area, so it's out in the Grace Creek area off of Chickenfoot Road. You can see highlighted by the star that's down there near the southwestern corner of our county. The applicant owner is Cape Verde Investment Properties, Mr. Kevin Riddle. The request is from, to go from A1 Agriculture to R40. Just the intent is just to, to subdivide the parcel into two tracts for the purposes of just building some homes on the property. It's just a little over two acres, 2.19 acres. In this area, you see sort of a hodgepodge of farming. You do have some homes and some subdivisions that are across the street and to the east of the property itself, and there is a farm that sits just behind here. But you can see, actually, I just want to point this out, so this is Kennedy Pond Road, so this does sit at the intersection of Kennedy Pond Road and Chickenfoot, for those of you that might be familiar with this general geography of the county. This is the zoning map. Largely, you have A1 in this area. You do have RR that sits to the east of the site. You have R40 that sits right across the street, and then you have some other R40 in the area, but for the most part, you can see it's largely just zoned A1. But R40 is not uncommon or unprecedented for this general location. This is in the Grace Creek Water and Sewer District. There are no water and sewer lines out here, but staff did not notice any kind of presence of hydroic or hydro inclusion soils, so staff's assumption is that well and septic would be fine for this particular project. This is just an aerial, just to show you again what's out here without any sort of obstructions of coloring or anything like that, but you can see it's just this track that sits out in front of this house, or that structure. Again, just go through that. This is in the South Central Area Plan that was adopted in 2015. The plan calls for this to be farmland. Now, even though it does say farmland, the plan policies do support types of residential housing out here, so you can see the zoning districts, that would be acceptable. Pretty much a lot of large lot stuff, so you got A1 and you have R40. So as the request is going to R40, staff felt that if you look at the plans and the suitable districts, we felt it was compliant with the adopted land use plan, and we supported it as such. This is the subject properties, you can see. This is located on the northwest view on Kennedy Pond Road, with the site immediately on the left-hand side. You can see the sign out there for public notification. This is looking immediately across the street. As you, if you can recall from the previous maps, there was a subdivision that was across the street, so this would be there. And then this is the east view, as you head now towards, looking towards Chickenfoot, with the site immediately on the right-hand side. So staff does recommend approval of the request for the aforementioned reasons. When we took this to the planning board last month, they supported it by seven to zero. So if you have any questions, I'll be trying to answer any I can.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Howard on this case? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Howard. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll ask for any additional questions or comments on this case from Mr. Howard or staff. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In case ZON 25-009, I move to approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to R40 Residential District and find that the request is consistent with the South Central Area Land Use Plan, which calls for farmland at this location. The Board also finds that the request is reasonable and in the public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion on the floor to approve the rezoning request for this case, properly seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. We'll go ahead and move to item five, items of business, and we'll move to, A was pulled. We'll go ahead and move to item B, consideration of Justice Services' START pilot project and the associated budget amendment BR 250016. County Manager Greer, call on you.
Yes, due to loss funding, the Justice Services decided to start the START program to, and been proposed to support the Worth Court. Assistant County Manager Heather Skeens and Justice Services Director Courtney McCollum. Will I present this item and answer any questions you may have?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. We have a PowerPoint, but I'm gonna introduce Ms. McCollum, Justice Service Director. Will present the Substance Treatment Advocacy and Recovery to Thrive Treatment Courts, or better known as START, two-year pilot project to address Worth and Mental Health Specialty Courts. This item was reviewed at the Board of Commissioners County ARP Committee on April 28th and at the Board of Commissioners Finance Committee on May 6th. So I'll turn it over to Ms. McCollum.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Assistant County Manager Skeens stated, START is a program for substance treatment, advocacy, and recovery to thrive. It is a combination of all of our specialty treatment courts under one umbrella. So our deliverable for our START program is to dissolve silo structures of our treatment courts, bridge coordination of services among all, with a facilitation of a judicial-led and county-managed initiative. Our mission is to advocate for recovery in the justice system and to promote positive change in criminal and addictive behavior for the purposes of empowering individuals on the path of recovery. Our goals are to decrease drug dependency and alcoholism among adults and also juveniles, to also reduce the chances of recidivism that adults, juveniles have when returning into the justice system. So I know that in our last presentation to the Finance Committee, it was mentioned that our treatment courts are an initiative of our courts in the state, but we see this program as assisting with the reduction of our detention center and moving those individuals out into possibly a pretrial diversionary program in which we can lessen the number of people in our county detention center. We will provide effective tools and resources to adults and juveniles with substance use and mental health disorders, also to facilitate connections to community resources, to address barriers and needs of persons in recovery, and to increase the community by reducing the impact, thank you, of violence and trauma while encouraging others into, or individuals into, recovery. So we want to streamline our service delivery by aligning all of our treatment courts SOPs. We want to initiate intensive staff trainings, technical assistance training from our funders, and intentional conference workshops for our treatment team members. We want to also provide a streamlined approach to our referrals and intake processes that will be used in our detention centers and also in the community. We want to have structured project phases for rewards and sanctions for those participants or defendants that are in our treatment courts. To develop a universal case management system that we can use that data and the data points to publish on our county dashboard so that the public sees the good work that our treatment courts are doing. We want to reculture our treatment team duties and responsibilities, so no matter who comes in and out of our treatment courts, the structures and tasks are the same. Develop MOUs for our courts and treatment teams, also the county hiring of positions awarded to Cumberland County, again, county-administered judicial ed. So our current funding structure of our specialty programs, we have current funding for sobriety DWI, which is under the leadership of, excuse me, apologize, of Judge Hasty. Our juvenile court, in which was under Judge Whitfield, but subject to change, our veterans' treatment court, Judge Olivera, and our adult drug treatment court and family drug court. Adult drug is under Judge Jordan, and our family drug opioid would be under Judge Silamac. So currently, with that structure, we do not have funding for mental health court. That is an important court, and that is up under our proposal today. And also Worth Court, which is human trafficking, that is under the leadership of our Judge King, and their funding ends fiscal year '25, which is June 30 of 2025. So we are working, or that money is from the state of North Carolina through the administration of courts. And then we also have some funding from the state as well for our veterans' treatment court. As you can see from the stars or the asterisks, we currently have that funding now, and the county is the direct grantee of that funding. So our proposed staff structure for START would be under the umbrella of Justice Services. So currently, we have funding for those titles that are in the yellow or gold, so we have funding for DWI sobriety, veterans' treatment, also adult drug treatment, family opioid and juvenile drug treatment with peer support specialist hours as well. Just to update this, our veterans' treatment court and adult drug treatment court coordinator started today, so we're really, really excited. So with, under this staffing structure and in this proposal, we are asking for those positions that are highlighted in the green. You will also see on the right-hand side of that chart that the yellow contracted position is for our veterans' treatment court, which, again, that funding expires June 30 of 2026. So in our proposal, we want to utilize the current grant funding that we have, in which we have received over $4 million to support the personnel of those five treatment courts that I mentioned. In this proposal, we want to fund two additional courts, which is our mental health and human trafficking court, to address over 4,000 individuals who enter the Cumberland County Detention Center from January, December, January to December 2024, according to our jail health statistics, that are diagnosed with mental health and substance use disorder. County hiring of grant-funded positions and also the pilot positions. Justice Service will serve as the administrator, administrator, which is operation and fiscal of these treatment courts, and we want to also collect data points to determine program effectiveness and the long-term planning of the service delivery of these courts. Our proposed recommendations is to request county funding in an amount of $430,000 each year for a two-year pilot to support the personnel and operating activities of the two courts, again, mental health and human trafficking. We also want to come back and provide a formal evaluation in 18 to 20 months to pretty much tell you guys what we think the continuum of services could look like in the future. We will continue to look for grants, apply for grants, hopefully get those grants, so that we can provide more structure and continuous service for people who are in need in our That's my presentation. Sorry, I'm a little still underwhelming, but thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, questions on this program? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question I have, and appreciate you coming and giving us this presentation very thorough.
Thank you.
Do you have any, any statistics on what the current utilization has been on some of these programs in terms of what the current caseload that we've seen has been? And then also, I know that this is a two-year pilot program. Do you have a, a long-term idea of where you would see the funding? Would this be an annual request during our budget? Could you see that being the, kind of the avenue, or walk me through that a little bit?
Okay, so yes, we do have some statistics on our programs, but currently, the disconnect in that is that our, our, our treatment coordinators, our treatment courts are operated under different umbrellas, so they're not all up under the county, and so sometimes it makes it difficult to get that information, and everyone pretty much perform or provide the same performance measures, so they're kind of scattered. And so with the START program, we want to streamline what that looks like in developing performance measures for each court, so everyone would tell us what intake is, everybody would tell us what referrals are, how many people possibly exit from the program, what the recidivism rate is for those, so streamlining those. for those. So streamlining those performance measures so everyone is telling the same story and so that we're collecting the same information. So some of that information goes to the federal government, some of it goes to the state, but as a county, we want to be able to safeguard that information and tell our story. And so, again, going back to funding, we are going to continue to look for funding. I think that we've done an excellent job since the little time I've been here of collecting the $4 million, and I think that we're going to continue with that momentum, but we have to start somewhere. And so, not sure if that's going to be something continuous, but I hope that we show you great numbers that when we come back, if we come back and ask, you're like, oh, they're doing an awesome job. Let's try to sacrifice. So I'm not sure. I just don't want to give that answer because I'm not sure at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And as I understood it from the three presentations I've been through, that's the purpose of the pilot program, and so you would come back and provide the commission a evaluation of the program to determine whether there would be future county funding against it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I think Commissioner Faircloth.
Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
Okay, I didn't mean to jump in front of you.
No, you were fine.
You eat it first. I think I voted against this in the Finance Committee, and I was trying to remember why, and because it is, it's really a good program, and my recollection is that we, we keep funding more things, and we've got, on Thursday, we're going to have our budget presented to us. And I just want to ask the county manager, all these things that we're putting in the budget, if we vote for them, how, how is that impacting what you're going to throw at us on Thursday? Because we're, you know.
We, we have this one accounted for. If you approve for it, approve it, it's out of the ARP Committee funding, so it will not, it will not impact the general fund or any other funds.
Okay, because I think, I don't, I don't know about the majority of the commissioners, but I know a few of us are going to try to get that tax rate down to just as skinny as we can get it. So I didn't, if this is not going to impact that, then I think I'll vote for it.
Not in the least, Bill.
Okay.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
You know, I would tell you, we've been through this, but on my day job, I would tell you, because I'm an attorney on the day job, is that, and I would probably tell you that the sheriff would be in favor of this. We see so many of our clients and those folk that are at the jail, we have mental health issues. And I think this mental health court, I think some of us was here when Judge Steele used to come and give us all the information you were here on the mental health issues that come out of the jail. And you will see, and I think it was the high recidivists, they, it was just, and I think I see my health department coordinator over there, it was just a vicious cycle of the same people cycling in and out because they were getting in there, wouldn't get any treatment, but you can't keep them but so long because they have a little petty, not petty, but they have crimes that you can't hold them but so long, and they're back out, and they're back in, and they're back out. And I think this will be able to give some treatment, to be able to get them to services. We can get this. I think if we look, we earlier did some things with Alliance Health to put them in our jail to be able to do that. We've got some things working through DSS and the Health Department to be able to do this. This funding, I think, is, is vitally important to this community, and I think that I would ask everybody to, and everybody has to do what they want to, but I think it's having that history that this is something we should push forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Vice Chairwoman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that, yes, mental health is very important because there's more than 450,000 adults, including young adults with serious mental illnesses. And as the NAMI National Lines of Mental Illness states, roughly two out of five North Carolinians, North Carolinians live with disorders of mental health services. Therefore, I definitely would like for our board to consider moving forward with being able to, be able to be in support of this, especially since the county manager has stated the concerns of, the funds are there without impacting our other areas. It's just my comment.
Thank you, Vice Chairwoman. Any other comments, commissioners, or questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Vice Chairwoman Jones?
Yes, I make a motion approval for the proposed actions below. Number one, I'd like the approval of the use of freed-up capacity monies in the amount of $680,000 due to the state grant award of $180,000 for two fiscal years to support a supervisor position, two court coordinator positions for the Wharf Mental Health Court, and a case manager position, client services and operating expenses. And also, number two, approval of the Associate Budget Ordinance Amendment, BR 250016, with updated amounts to support the START pilot project.
Is there a second?
I second. That was 860, Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, I stated that I would like for that due to the fact that, no, correction, 680,000 due to the state grant, because of my understanding, they'll be getting an award of 180,000K. So I just pretty much deducted that amount that in my understanding is coming down from the state.
We haven't received official notification. We've heard through the grapevine, but we've not received anything officially.
Well, then, in the event, like I stated, 680,000, we can always add that additional money if they do not get that. But since we've heard that that's going to be taking place, my understanding from the state level that's been approved, I would prefer to, again, make my motion be 680,000. We can always make adjustments if needed if it doesn't come through.
Is, is, is there, do we have a second so we can discuss it?
I second it.
Okay. County Manager, you have a comment?
If we do not get the funding, we have funding out, we have enough funding to support the program and make sure it's whole and make it to 100, $860,000.
Commissioner Adams?
Madam Vice Chair, I would ask if we could do the 860, and it be reduced by that if that comes in. That way, we don't have to come back and do the 250.
Okay, that's fine. Then let me, let me adjust that approval then. Approval of the use of freed-up capacity monies in the amount of 860,000 with, again, as it stated, we'll make an adjustment amended in the event that they do not get the 180,000K. We can just adjust that.
That's, I second it.
Motion on the floor, been properly seconded. I'll open it up for questions or discussions on the motion. Hearing none, I will ask for your approval of the motion by raising your right hand. Any affirmative?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Faircloth, and Commissioner Adams voting in opposition, Commissioner Tyson and Commissioner Patel.
Go ahead and move to item C, Consideration of Impact Grant Recommendations. County Manager Greer, you're recognized.
Yes, on April 28th, the American Rescue Plan Committee met and made recommendations of approximately $1.5 million of community impact grant recommendations. Tyvall, Chief of Staff, will present this item and discuss any questions you may have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening. So as the manager stated at our, at your February 17th meeting, you approved additional allocation of funding for the Community Impact Grant Program. Following that action, the application period was opened from February 28th through April 1st, and that increase was $1,081,735. We received 97 applications for funding totaling $3,199, $99,518 in funding requests. In accordance with the program guidelines established by the committee, 69 applications were ultimately recommended for funding. These recommendations spanned five distinct categories. Those were health and human services, religious and faith-based services, public safety and emergency response, educational and youth development, and arts, culture, and community development. These recommendations were reviewed by the ARP Committee on April 28th, where the committee voted to move them forward as an item of business for consideration by the full board. A full list of recommended nonprofit organizations, including a brief program summary, their funding requests, the recommendation was included in your meeting packet for review. This evening, staff is bringing forth these recommendations as presented to the ARP Committee, and we are seeking the board's consideration to move forward with funding these nonprofit organizations. Upon approval, staff will notify all program applicants regarding the disposition of their application, along with the next steps for these award recipients. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
Vice Chairwoman Jones, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Chief Tyvall, for public information and knowledge. I just want to make sure that you clarify a little bit of the process and who all gets to look at these applications. As the Chairwoman for the ARP Committee, and we also have a chairman, as the Chairwoman for that committee, as well as Commissioner Patel serves on the ARP Committee, as well as Ms. Counsel, I just want you to explain for, to the public what that process is, so everyone can be clear on how that works and who looks at the applications before it does come to my particular committee.
Sure. So the process began with the ARP Committee standing up that guideline. From there, we went to the Finance Committee to ask for allocation. We came to the board, and the board approved that allocation. From that point on, the application opened, as I stated, on February 28th and ran until April 1st. At that time, we received 97 applications. The first thing staff did, the staff committee did that reviewed, was to first organize each one of the 97 into the five categories that the committee put in place. From, without looking at any type of content, we just sorted them into where they fell into that, those categories. Essentially, staff then did a equal portion of the allocated funding, $300,000 to each of the categories. Basically, what happens is, depending on how many people in that category, you are, you're competitive to the others that are in that category. From that point, staff reviewed all applications. We went through a, we went through the application process, which included several key points in that rubric to include organizational capacity, financials, any type of history, time in service, the like, and also a risk assessment, risk, ranking them from low, medium, and high risk as, as we typically do with these types of programs. From that point on, staff scored each of the applications and then brought those applications to the ARP Committee for consideration. Of course, again, using the finite amount of dollars that was allocated to the program, and so, and we have 69, and so quite a few applications there. And so, we just, we have brought those forward to the ARP, ARP Committee for consideration, and here we are this evening.
Thank you. And I did want to say that the staff did an excellent job as far as looking through the applications, and I just wanted that clear to everyone, that the commissioners do not have any involvement, no commissioners, in that process. We only get to see the recommendations after that particular process has been made. Thank you for clearing that up.
Commissioners, other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Vice Chairwoman Jones, you're recognized.
Yes, I make a motion that the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners move to direct the county manager to approve and move forward with the Community Impact Grant Program as reviewed by the ARP Committee, and that the following list of organizations be awarded contracts, and the sums recommended by the staff from the following organizations. If I do not state one of the organizations, then please note that the other organizations will be pending review by the ARP Oversight Committee to be presented at a later time. Those that have been approved are as follows. Human Services, I recommend be approved. United Way, Cumberland County, $10,000. Rape Crises Volunteers of Cumberland County, $15,000. Spring Lake Family Support Services, $10,000. Carolina Collaborative Community Care, $30,000. Cumberland County Coordinating Council of Older Adults, $30,000. McReeve Fellowship Homes, $15,000. Thompson Child and Family Focuses, $10,000. Coastal Horizon Center, $10,000. Connections of Cumberland County, $30,000. Heal Holistic Journey Incorporated, $10,000. Youth Thrive, $13,000. Community Health Interventions, $20,000. Southlight Healthcare, $17,000. Cumberland Health Net, $10,000. Gateway Beautiful, $30,000. Broken Chains, $10,000. And at this time, I would like approval of those. I'm going to do it by categories. So I would like to take a vote on, like to take a vote for those that are in favor of those at this time, and then we'll go on to the next category. All those in favor for those to be approved, please write, raise your right hand. I'm going to do the categories individually if you don't mind.
I need to get a motion and second each one then.
Okay, yeah, just to make it easy.
So is there a second on approval of the Health and Human Services items as listed?
I'll second it.
There's, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote on this item. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
All right, Madam Vice Chair, if you'll continue with the next grouping.
Thank you. And the next group for Coming, Community Impact, the next group is going to be for faith-based services. Federal Urban Ministry, $35,000. Ebony Chapel Church, $35,000. Excuse me, Manor Church, $25,000. Divine Empowerment International Christian Church, $25,000. Labian Baptist Church, $18,000. United Methodist and Christ Church, $15,000. Federal Operation Image, $40,000. Global Covenant, excuse me, Covenant Incorporated, $10,000. The Soul Harvest Apothoscope Church, $10,000. Greater First Baptist Church, $25,000. Harvest Family Church, $15,000. Rosa Herman Ministries International, $15,000. Heal the Land Ministries, $15,000. And Jesus is the Answer Worship Center, $17,000.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, second.
We have a second from Commissioner Council. All in favor of the Community Impact Grant List for Faith-Based Services as outlined, any, it's been properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your approval. Please raise your right hand in approval.
Unanimous.
Vice Chairwoman, if you'll continue with the next round.
Thank you. The next round for Community Impact Grant will be for emergency response and public safety as follows. Cumberland County Road Volunteer Fire Service Incorporated, $25,000. Stony Point Fire Department, $25,000. And then we have the Pierce Military Mills Fire Department, $40,000. Grace Creek Volunteer Fire Department, $40,000. Beaver's Dam Volunteer Fire Department of Cumberland County, $25,000. Wade Community Fire Department, $40,000. Cotton Volunteer Fire Department, $25,000. Eastover Volunteer Fire Department, $40,000. Godwin Falcon Fire Department, $40,000.
Is there a second on that group? There's been a motion to approve the Community Impact Grants for the Emergency Response Group, seconded by Commissioner Council. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Madam Vice Chair, if you'll continue with the next group.
And the next group is going to be Community Impact Grant Educational and Youth Development. The Youth Adults Project of Cumberland County, YAP, $20,000. The Tulsa Initiative Incorporated, $20,000. The Two Six Project Limited, $20,000. Greater Life of Favel, GLOF, $15,000. Future Endeavors Life Program, $25,000. Employment Source Incorporated, $20,000. Young Men's Christian Association of Sand Hills, North Carolina Corporation, $15,000. Future Starts Now Incorporated, $10,000. LIAM Outreach Community Support Center, $15,000. Marjorie McLean Foundation, $10,000. Carolina Crew Incorporated, $10,000. LMHT Incorporated, $30,000. The Group Theory, $25,000. JS6 Youth Foundation, $15,000. Pentalope Praises, $10,000. Follow the Spectrum, $10,000. And that up here was initiation, which was, let's make it happen together, it's one organization, $30,000. I didn't want to do the abbreviation.
Is there a second? And there's a motion for the Community Impact Grant Award for the youth development. It's been seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in affirmative, raise your right hand. All in affirmative, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Madam Vice Chair, if you'll continue with the next group.
The next group for Community Impact Grant will be Arts, Culture, and Community Development Organizations. The first one on the list, Las Amicas Fayetteville Elite Chapter, $10,000. Legal Aid of North Carolina, $40,000. Community Concerts of Fayetteville Incorporated, $35,000. Fayetteville Symphony Orchestra, $35,000. The Gilbert Theater, $25,000. Combined Unified Services Incorporated, $30,000. Sand Hills Jazz Society, $35,000. And the Cape Fear Botanical Gardens, $30,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor for the Community Impact Grants for the Community Development. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Commissioner Faircloth, you recognize?
I have a question. Two of the groups were left out. Cool Springs Downtown District Incorporated, $30,000. Groundswell Pictures Incorporated, $30,000. They were not mentioned, they were skipped. Was the intention to skip them, or was that just oversight?
Yes, as I stated earlier, we have some pending review that our ARP Oversight Committee, if the, if the name was not called out of the 96, that is because, it doesn't mean that they haven't got fundings. It just means that our ARP committee, we have decided that we will have a meeting to review more in-depth some of the names on the list.
Okay, so that means that the total of 300,000 actually becomes 240,000, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Faircloth. Commissioner Adams, did you have anything? Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand in affirmative.
Unanimous.
Madam Vice Chairwoman, does that take care of all the groupings?
Yes, and thank you all for your work. We know we love our nonprofits.
Thank you. Thank you, Ty. We will go now to move to Item D, Employee Health Center Provider. County Manager Greer.
Yes, this item has come back. Robin Dever, I mean, Robin Coos, sorry, Robin. Robin Coos, Finance Director, will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we've, we've met a couple of times and discussed. The original recommendation was made on April 10th, and that was for a new three-year contract with our current provider, Proactive MD, at an annual cost of $1,254,975, which is going to be an increase of $470,922. And that increase was basically going to cover some additional staffing, to where our new staffing would be two nurse practitioners, two licensed practical nurses, nurses, and one office manager. At the May 5th meeting, we had some additional discussion about replacing, the cost of replacing a nurse practitioner with an MD, and then also about reducing the contract term from three years to one year, and then also about some termination options if services were not met to the, to the extent that the Board requires. And so, with that information, we went back to Proactive MD, USI, who is our broker, has been communicating with them, and they have made the following solution as an offer. They would like to include a performance guarantee, where their program fees were at risk each quarter. So, those program fees each quarter are $30,000. The new target metrics would be that Proactive MD would schedule 80% of their appointments for all visits designated as sick or acute within one business day, either at the health center or through a virtual visit, and then they would schedule 80% of the appointments for all visits determined as not acute within 10 business days of the request. If they do not meet both of these criteria, they would have one quarter to try to rectify. And then, if they did not rectify that second quarter in a row, then they would lose their $30,000 of fees that, that quarter, and then they'd also give us the option to terminate at that time without any financial penalty. They did consider the request that was made in the last meeting about having an annual review that would be subject to termination at that point in time. They're not opposed to the review, but they said if, if we did create the contract in that manner, they'd treat it as a one-year contract, so we go into the, the increased costs associated with that contract. So, one of the things that they pointed out to me, I want to make sure I made clear, because we're a little bit late, you know, moving this through, they're going to need about 90 days to get someone on staff in that vacant position that we don't have filled right now. So, these metrics, they would want to be in place at that point in time. So, our recommendation at this point is to award the three-year contract at the cost of $1,254,975, with a staffing level that includes two full-time nurse practitioners, two full-time licensed practical nurses, and one full-time office manager. And then also add the additional performance measures that would provide a financial penalty of $30,000 in the second consecutive quarter if performance measures are unmet, and the option to terminate with out penalty if performance are not met in that second quarter.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question I have, and I appreciate staff getting these performance metrics in the contract. I think that's very important, especially in light of some of the feedback that we've received as a board from some of the employees of the quality of service and level of service. My question to you is, so, walk us through this accountability. How is the information going to be gathered? Is it going to be USI that gathers, gathers it? Is it going to be us? Will it be gathered at the clinic? Will questionnaires be sent out? Will it be blind? Kind of walk us through how this information's gathered per quarter.
It would have to be gathered at the clinic by the personnel there, and it would be part of the, the metrics that are shared already. I, I am not part of that team at this point in time that receives those, but I know that they happen, I would assume, either monthly or at least quarterly at this point in time, and, and they would be added to that list.
Go ahead. And, and so, as the staff there is collecting that information, I would take it that the responses to those surveys would be kept confidential and not released to that staff? Or, how is that going to work to make sure that, you know, you see what I'm getting at? I don't want an employee coming in and feeling like they cannot give an honest evaluation for fear of retribution, or that they're not going to receive the level of care that they need if they're giving it to the provider. So, how do we ensure that they have the, the freedom to be able to speak up without concern of retribution?
I, I think I misunderstood how you presented that the first time. I don't think the staff would be filling out a questionnaire upon the time they leave. I think that the metrics would be that they're tracking themselves being Proactive MD. I don't think there would be any intervention with, with the, with the clients. In other words, if, if they, they have a way of tracking who's requesting an appointment, they know when they've seen that individual, and they would report that information back to us.
County Manager.
What we'll work, what we'll do is, we'll work with Proactive to get an email response where their staff will not be able to follow up email, where the staff can make recommendations or get a feedback, and it's not provided to Proactive. Due to recent complications with these things, I've been asked that question periodically over the last couple of weeks, and it doesn't go back to the medical staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
I mean, are there any other questions, Commissioners?
Hearing none, you recognize for a motion, Commissioner Patel.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion awarding a three-year contract to Proactive MD at an annual cost of $1,254,975, with staffing levels to include two time, two full-time nurse practitioners, two full-time licensed practical nurses, and one full-time office manager. Additional performance measures will be added to the contract, as noted in the background, which provide a financial penalty of $30,000 in the second consecutive quarter if performance measures are unmet, and with the option to terminate without cause if performance measures are not met in the next quarter.
There's a motion to approve a three-year contract with Proactive MD. It's been properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand in the affirmative.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeBiere, Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Faircloth, and Commissioner Adams. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you.
Yes.
We'll go ahead and move to Item E, Consideration of Ordinance Regulating Explosives on Firing Ranges and Amending Firearms Regulations. County Manager Greer.
Yes, County Attorney Rick Morfield will present this item. This is an item that's come forward in previous Policy Committee meetings, and I'll turn it over to Rick Morfield. Rick.
We'll go ahead, give us, give a second, we'll let people exit.
As the County Manager stated, this, this matter has been thoroughly vetted, it's been been to the Policy Committee twice and to the Board Commissioners' agenda session on March 13th, at which time the Board directed me to take, bring this to a later date, to, to fully incorporate the comments made by the Sheriff's Office and some exclusions that Commissioner Tyson asked to be added. That has been done. It is, it is a, it's actually a new ordinance to regulate the use of explosives on private shooting ranges, target ranges, just backyard ranges, basically. Explosives are generally all explosive, most explosives are regulated by the Federal Code, which requires a license to use and possess them. There are certain types of, this, this is addressed as a type of explosive that's not regulated by the Federal Code. It's called a mixed binary explosive, where you buy a kit that has two components that you put together, and they have become popular to be used as shooting targets. It takes a high impact of, of something to make them explode, and of course, they're very loud. That, that's what the basis for this is. In the second consideration of this at the Policy Committee, they also asked to amend the, an existing ordinance, which we have regulating the firing of firearms, which existing ordinance prohibits a person from discharging a firearm if they know or have reasonable grounds know that it will strike within 200 yards of a dwelling unit or other structure that's not owned by them and without the consent of the document. The Policy Committee is recommending that to be moved from 200 to 225 yards. So, what this resolution is, it makes, it is, if you adopt this resolution, it will, it will amend that existing ordinance to increase that distance that you can't fire a firearm, that you know, or likely know that it will strike, from 200 to 225 yards, and the attached ordinance is, the new, the new ordinance is attached to that fully, it's a standalone ordinance, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, Ordinance Regulating Explosives on Firing Ranges. This has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Office twice, and this includes language that the sheriff commented on and requested, and it incorporates exemptions that were not in the first draft, that were requested by Commissioner Tyson, and also reviewed and recommended by the sheriff. To adopt these ordinances, this amendment to an ordinance and this new ordinance, if you adopt the resolution attached in the package, which is titled Resolution of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to Adopt a New Ordinance Regulating Explosives on Firing Ranges and to amend Article 9 Firearms Regulations of Chapter 9.5 of the Cumberland County Code, adoption of that resolution will make both of this, this amendment and this new ordinance effective immediately. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions on, for Attorney Morfield on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Yes, I make a motion that the ordinance and the amendment to the firearms regulation in Article 9 of Chapter 9.5 of the Cumberland County Code may be adapted by the attached resolution.
Second. There's a motion on, on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson. Commissioner Council, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeBiere, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Faircloth. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
Mr. Chairman, this, this will have to be brought back to another meeting. In order to be adopted, the first reading must be approved by all Commissioners.
Mr. Attorney, what's the regulation on requirement for a second reading? You said a second meeting, but...
I'll just bring it back to the next regular meeting, and then, and then it will pass by a majority vote. It has to be brought back within 100 days. I can, if this is ready, I can bring it back.
But in a, in a second meeting, so I can adjourn the meeting at the end or call a special meeting tomorrow to approve this resolution, correct? Or by unanimous support, we can add it to an item...
It should come back as a regular, to the, a regular meeting. I'll bring it back at the first meeting in June.
That's not my question. That's your recommendation, Mr. Attorney. I'm asking for clarification on what defines, so, it, it, it has to come back to a separate meeting?
Yes, sir.
Not in the same meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so my question is, I can call a special meeting tomorrow to approve this resolution?
Just give me a second, I'll have to pull it up, because I think it has to be a regular meeting. Excuse me, sir.
24. Okay, thank you. I'll, I will...
I'll watch out of that in a few minutes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the next item. You can just let me know that information after the meeting. All right, we'll go ahead and move to Item F, the Added Approval of the Resolution of Intent to Lease Real Property to the Vision Resource Center. County Manager Greer.
Yes, Heather Skeens, Assistant County Manager, Heather Skeens will present this item, and discuss any questions you may have. Back on May 8th, we discussed all the leases, Vision Resource being one, for $2,400 a year, but I'll turn it over to Heather.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
This item was brought before the Finance Committee, Board of Commissioners Finance Committee, with the current lease agreement for $2,400. It expires June 30th, 2025. The county pays for utilities, maintenance, and repairs, and general property insurance for this property. For the calendar year 2024, the county's cost was $26,164.78. Two additional pieces of information that I provided the Finance Committee was that in fiscal year 2425, the county provided community-based funding and freed-up capacity funding in the amount of $65,000. So, I contacted Ms. Thomas after the Finance Committee and let her know that the wishes of the Finance Committee were to approve the lease and to add in and require payment of utilities, which is currently in the lease, but we've never collected utilities from Vision Resource Center. She sent a letter of appeal to the utilities, and I attached that to your packet for this evening.
Commissioners, any questions on this item?
I've got a point of clarification.
Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
My impression of the Finance Committee's action was just to approve the lease the way it was recommended.
That is correct.
Which was no change from the previous year.
That is correct, and in the lease, they were required to pay utilities. We've just never collected the utilities from Vision Resource Center, but it is in the lease that they will pay rent and utilities.
Commissioner Faircloth, anything else you could...
I'm just making clarification, we didn't change the lease.
Commissioner, or, excuse me, Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was my understanding, because we, we've been paying it, that they could not pay it, of which we've been paying the utilities all this time, correct? Have we not been paying the utilities?
We have been paying the utilities. I believe in the original lease, utilities was included and has always been included. Ms. Thomas has indicated that they've never paid it, and it was her understanding she did not have to pay it.
So, the original lease, they were not paying utilities?
In the original lease, it requires them to pay utilities. We've just never collected utilities.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
The manager.
Oh, I'm sorry, County Manager.
I think in the past... I think in the past, based on research, there was probably a reimbursement coming back from Vision Resource. Sometime in the near, in the past, that reimbursement stopped, and the county kept paying the utilities and not requesting reimbursement. That has been going on for at least 10 years that I can account. So, although the lease, it's stipulated in the lease, the amount of the utilities normally, at the highest that I've seen, it's been $400, maybe $450 in the summertime, but generally reaches, averages about 200, no more than $250 per month.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner, Vice Chairwoman Jones, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing. So, I would recommend, if we've been paying it for 10 years, and my understanding is they're having difficulty paying, you know, it's difficult for them to pay just the rent by itself, and so, if we've been paying the utilities, I would recommend that we continue to pay the utilities for the, you know, we understand the services, as we've heard again tonight, of what they provide for our community, and I feel like they're in a distressed financial situation that they won't be able to handle paying utilities that we've been paying for 10 years.
County Manager, you're recognized.
If there's any material change in the volume or the cost or the monthly utilities, I'll bring it forward to the board.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you. So, I know we discussed this in the Finance Committee and pushed it forward to our regular board meeting agenda tonight. After our finance meeting, I did speak with the Executive Director of the VRC in detail about their financial situation, their source of revenue, historical funding from the county, and they do a great job of going after grant programs and trying to make ends meet. And I do think, you know, as robust as our county services are, and I do genuinely believe that we do a great job, there are donut holes, if you will, where our services just don't apply. And the VRC is definitely an organization that I would say does fill a very much needed role in our community. And considering their financial position, as well as the value that they give back to our county, I would like to ask the Board of Commissioners to consider reducing their annual rate rent for lease for their three-year contract or lease contract to $1 a year instead of $2,400 a year. I can put that in the form of a motion.
You'll hold that motion for a second. I'm going to let Commissioner Adams make a comment, and then I'll turn it back over to you for a motion.
You know, Commissioner Patel, thank you so much, because I'm with you. We just approved in our consent agenda for Alliance Mental Health, which has millions of dollars, to have zero rent at 1724 Rox Avenue. And I agree with that, because I think that that crisis unit does what this community needs. I also think that Vision Resource does what this community needs, and we should be somewhat consistent. I know that lease probably hadn't come up, but if you talk about employment source, I think we do them a dollar a year. And they have, if you look at their 990, they are a multimillion-dollar company. And so, I would agree to take it down to a dollar, but also not to, if friendly amendment, not to collect the utilities also. I mean, they just do a tremendous amount of work in this community. Hope y'all all come to wing fling and give them some money.
And no need for a second yet. We'll get Commissioner Patel to make a motion and have been to wing fling and ate the wings. Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty much Commissioner Glenn Adams stated what I was going to state. I used to be Executive Director for Service Source, so I'm familiar that what they do get charged, to be honest. And I feel like, yes, there are services for people with disabilities, but again, so is Vision Resource, so I would say, yes, I agree with that, that utilities should be included along with the dollar rate. Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized for a motion.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adopt the following resolution with specific terms and advertise the public notice at least 30 days in advance of the lease approval with the intent to lease. Be it resolved, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners finds that the real property located at 2736 Cedar Creek Road in Fayetteville will not be needed for government purposes for the three-year term proposed for the lease of the property to the Vision Resource Center, and this board intends to adapt or adopt a resolution at its August 11, 2025, regular meeting approving the lease pursuant to terms to be advertised as follows. Public notice of proposed lease pursuant to GS 160A-272. Take notice that the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners has found that the real property described herein will not be needed for government purposes for the term of the lease described herein, and that the board intends to adopt a resolution at its meeting to be held on August 11, 2025, approving the lease of approximately 2,752 square feet of space located at 2736 Cedar Creek Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, to the Vision Resource Center Inc. for a term of three years commencing on July 1, 2025, at an annual rental rate of $1, and utilities as a responsibility of the landlord.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. We will go ahead and move forward. Thank you, Assistant County Manager Skeens. We will go ahead and move forward to item six. There's no nominations. Item seven, there are no appointments. At this time, I'll go ahead and recess the Board of Commissioners. I'll convene the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting and move to item eight, Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board and Consent Agenda. County Manager Greer.
Yes, the item for the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District that requires approval is the approval of the construction change order with the test well program for the Graves Creek Phase 1. We want to go down deeper into wells. Let's go and increase the contract to approximately $456,000 with Bill's Well Drilling. And you approved this previously in your consent item. Consent item. Three I.
Any questions for the manager on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for, a motion, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the contract change order with Bill's Well Drilling Company in the amount of $775,996, and that we authorize the chairman to execute the attached contract change order that has received periodic certification and has been determined to be legally sufficient.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the contract change order. It's been properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand in the affirmative.
Unanimous.
Hearing, seeing no other business for the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District, I will adjourn this governing board meeting, and I will move to convene the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board. First item of business, Norcrest Water Sewer and District Governing Board, Agenda Item A, Approval of Partial Certification of Eagles Bluff Subdivision, Phase 1 of Norcrest, Permit to. County Manager Greer.
Yes, our Public Utilities Department is working with Lake Tree Inc., property owner Jeffrey Nobles, regarding relocating a sewer line in the Norcrest Water and Sewer District. This item was previously approved in the consent item as item 9A, and we request your approval again as the board for the Norcrest Water and Sewer District.
Any questions for County Manager Greer? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Yes, I recommend a motion approval of the partial certification permit for Eagles Bluff Subdivision Phase 1 of the Norcrest Permit to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to, for approval, it's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain, ask for your vote on this motion. Raise your right hand, approval.
Unanimous.
I'll go ahead. At this time, seeing no other business for the Norcrest Water and Sewer District, we'll adjourn the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Board and we'll reconvene the Board of Commissioners meetings. And item 10 is closed session.
Yes, it'll be a short closed session.
Entertain a motion, Vice Woman, Vice Chairwoman Jones.
A motion for closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 and personal matters pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A6.
Second. Motion has been properly seconded, go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A3 and 6. Properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We are now in closed session. I'll entertain a motion from Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Yes, motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
There's a motion to come out of closed session, been properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And hearing, seeing no other business before this body, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned.